Good evening, everybody. Fix my mic before I'm ever gonna make more noise. Uh, welcome to the City of Clear Lake Council Chambers. Today is August 9th and we are having a regular meeting for the Clear Lake City Council. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Mayor Sabatier?
Here. Councilmember Overton, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If Mr. Todd Ankle could come up to the podium for indication, please, thank you.
Just like to open with a little prayer and give thanks. I'd like to give thanks for this community and how everybody has come together during this time of the fires and everything. And thank God for firemen and all the other ones that have helped, the policemen and the first responders and the nurses and the Red Cross and I'm sure I'm missing somebody, but I just want to give thanks for all that before we open in prayer. Lord, we just ask you for wisdom tonight and we ask that we could be wise in all our choices. We ask that you would continue to bless this community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you again, Mr. Ankle. Mr. Folsom, are there any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Mayor, no changes.
Okay. And Mr. Jones, any announcement from our closed session?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's no report of action for the session.
All right, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to public comment. I have two applications here or pieces of papers. So first up is Mr. Sutherland, David Sutherland, for needed fire control throughout the avenues.
My good counsel, I've never been here before, but anyway, I went through the avenues and what have you, looking around at what's going on there. It's a disaster waiting to happen. You put a fire marshal, go around, drive around and take a look at everything and what have you. I'm asking for maybe doing a fire prevention over there, going in and taking out anything below 12 feet, including the underbrush and what have you, that's really thick, a lot of areas over there. Also, there's a lot of houses in that area that people do care about and do try and take care of. But we have also a situation with garbage over there and what have you, and I've seen this down in Sacramento, where they had, uh, gun state funds or whatever, which I think we could probably get now and inquire about it for this, for the current wear with all, and just have everybody put anything out on the street, have it picked up, all the garbage, throughout the streets and the avenues and maybe throughout the city of Clear Lake. We've lost eight hundred square miles in the last three years. But I think it should be looked at. I think somebody should go down and talk to the state and see if they can get finances higher locally for people to tear out. Under 12, doesn't matter if it's private, whatever type of property, cut everything down, pull all of that stuff out there that's been built up over the years, okay? Uh, and just drive around abandoned vehicles, abandoned boats, just garbage. Now, if you give an opportunity for these people, and there'll be some that are invalid and can't do it, but knocking door to door and get everything out, help them get everything that they don't want, including furniture, doesn't even matter. Just pull it out, ball it, just whatever, and put it out on the street, one street at a time, big signs saying, this is the period of time you've got to put it out on the street to collect all this garbage. And that's what I'm just trying to say. If it can get cleaned up now, you might save lives and save a lot of money in the process, because I'm sure it's quite expensive to fight a fire. I'm just requesting you have somebody that's responsible, knows what he's looking at, tours the area, and says, this does need to happen, this does need to take place. And finally, find out the word for all from the federal or the state level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just to make a quick point, we cannot discuss what is brought to us during public comment or that would be a Brown Act violation and needs to be on our agenda for us to discuss, but thank you very much for letting us listen to your comments today. Next, I have Bill Marshall for roads and vacant lots.
Hello.
Good evening.
Um, what he touched on is what I was concerned about. I live north or east of the highway and there's a lot of vacant lots, very thick underbrush. My house is where I live, there's no weeds, this thing goes off once he used to keep my plane, it's gonna take care of it. And if that place up there goes, like that, right up there, you're gonna really see a fire. It's like a forest up there. And nothing's ever been done about it. And I asked him lots of times before I got sick, the city, would a bike cuts a lot? Well, I'm not allowed to cut somebody else's lot, that's an extraordinary, it's like all the fire departments. They got on people and after about a half a dozen tries, they finally came up with cutting a lot. But and there's lots of people down home who's responsible for that, their vacant lots, I have no soul. Who takes care of that?
And so at that point, we can't have a discussion back and forth and obviously they're sharing your concerns.
The real concern up there would be fires. And second of all, we're not asking for, I mean, we pay our property tax like everybody else, our special district taxes. Our roads are so generated up there, we're not asking for a payment or anything, maybe a little fill to help it out. I mean, the cars are bottoming out. I got two bad legs and I have two false legs, I can barely walk up the darn road. Just bring in some fill, we're not asking for payments. Just something we can drive on, maybe walk on a little bit, it's terrible up there.
So if you want to come in on Monday or Monday through Thursday from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. and talk to our code enforcement and ask them to look at the overgrowth going on or about the public works, talk to them about the roads, you could always put a request for service for those to be looked at. So please come into City Hall and take a look.
Want me to do a reading?
Yes. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to make a public comment that is not an item on our agenda? All right, thank you very much for your comments and we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to pull an item for us from the consent agenda? No? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda? All right, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
Mr. Mayor, would you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrison, a second by Councilmember Overton, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna go ahead and move on to public hearing, item number four, Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so just to give you a little bit of background, this is a, we're gonna be talking about a, consider the ordinance number 207-2018, development agreement with Chris Jennings for commercial cannabis operations. The applicant is proposing that a commercial cannabis operation on a 36, 8-foot acre parcel off of Dam Road that he owns, the operation will utilize approximately 1.5 acres within that site. The project proposes to be a combination of cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and processing. Cultivation will consist of two 11,500 square foot greenhouses constructed on concrete pads. A 5,000 square foot processing shed will be constructed next to the greenhouses. An initial study was prepared in accordance with CEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. There are a few potential significant environmental impacts, but those will be mitigated by required measures agreed to by the applicant. Mitigated negative declaration will be issued for this project, assuming you heard. The property is zone RP, which is resource protection. The uses are allowed in the RP zone with a cannabis use permit. The planning commission did approve a cannabis, multiple cannabis use permits and regulatory permits on June 26th at a notice public hearing. A development agreement is required for commercial cannabis operations. The planning commission recommended approval of the development agreement at the June 26th planning commission meeting. Some of the major deal points of the development agreement include that it's a three-year term from the date of operation. They have 12 months to be operational. Uh, then at the pleasure of council, it would be a seven-year extension. There is a production fee of 5% from the gross sales of manufacturing and distribution. There is a facility fee of $2 per gross per foot of cultivation, processing, and manufacturing area. The $2 from cultivation would match what the county charges, what I think was their measure C, tabs. So the recommendation is to concur with issuing the mitigated negative declaration that the project will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact in accordance with CEQA. And, um, our land use attorney, Russ Gilbrand, is here also to correct me if I say something incorrect. Um, and hold the first reading of ordinance number 207-2018, read by Ty Lowly, wait for the hearing, uh, further reading, and set the second reading adoption for August 23rd, 2018. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Folsom.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one thing, I did notice that there were just a few numbering and formatting issues in the building altogether, three of the development agreements. Those will be modified and changed and look, you know, more professional before it's finalized, but it's the language therein that the grounds I can be more consistent with.
Which one was that being?
P. It probably isn't P, but yes, definitely, that's a section P. We'll make sure those changes are made.
Thank you very much for the update. Any questions for our staff from the council?
I do have.
Go for it.
On P, another one, it's on P in all three of them actually. Uh, Saban is after conducting a duly noticed hearing.
What page is it?
Uh, page 424. Paragraph P.
The applicant. Mr. Jennings, would it be okay for you to approach the podium in case that we have questions?
Are you there?
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
You're speaking of page 424 for the Chris Jennings slash City of Clear Lake Development Agreement?
That's correct. Um, paragraph P, section P. First sentence, after conducting a duly noticed hearing on Lake 2018.
And that will be where August 23rd is filled in?
Yes.
Yeah, and then I'm actually just seeing another, uh...
City of Clear Lake.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess you get two guesses as to where we got the question.
I ain't even smart enough to do that in one.
I gave you the right one, though.
Any other questions?
Was, when you did... When you did the hearing, uh, the planning commission, I think somewhere in here it said everyone was affected neighbors, I guess, were notified of the hearing. I know at least one neighbor wasn't notified at the hearing. Was that done or was it not done or was there a reason it didn't need to be done?
For the hearing, my understanding...
For the planning commission.
Yeah. Uh, we would have noticed 300 feet from, uh, and we do a search. So if they didn't get it, I mean, they should have got it, because it would buy out to everyone that we have, um, from the address list. So it would have gotten sent. I couldn't explain why they wouldn't have got it.
Yeah, um, possibly because they're not in the city.
Uh, it would go to wherever the title says.
The P L box that was on it, they didn't get it. I think it, in this particular case, obviously, because I know about it, it's, probably didn't matter, but they in fact did not get it. So that's all you have on that. Chris?
Russ? Councilmember Bennett?
Could we go back? The, uh, production fee and the facility fee, is that the one time where I look in here and it's a annual facility fee?
Both of them are annuals.
Semi-annual production fee.
Right, I mean, the production fee, they're gonna pay it every year.
Yeah.
But the, um, production fee will be paid in biannual installments.
I see in the, in the staff report, but it's in there, but I just wanted to get a clarification for the public on that. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm gonna open it up to the public real quick, no, not yet, sorry.
Just one quick. Um, I think I read somewhere in here that your water bladder was gonna be 50,000, 250,000 gallon ladders and then I heard verbally that it's only gonna be one.
I believe they changed all of the initial study down to one bladder. That bladder will be in a concrete holding pad, it's staying up to 110%, just in case there's ever a rupture in that bladder, which means the code of what fishing game wants for like a stream bed alterations for 1602 permits. That's all agreed to and identified with the initial study.
So one, one bladder?
150, correct.
And that will be at the north end of the...
By your property, correct.
Right, that was way at the top.
You, you and I had a conversation earlier and I think I asked you if you were gonna do a survey and make sure of the lines.
I plan on doing that at some point still.
Before the bladder set.
For sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure I got squatters on my other side of the property, not to speak, so...
Oh, we could use a feeder kettle.
All right, I already dumped 10 tons with the rocks, so no one should come on your property either. But I will, um, definitely get a survey done because I need to look at landmarks as well, so whenever I'm building things out, I want to take up the maximum amount of space I can in the long run. I don't want my fence line to be just too far on this side, but really go further that way. And I don't want to encroach any of my neighbors and I don't want any of my neighbors approaching on me. So generally, the right thing to do is we pay the money to go ahead and do a, you know, survey on the property, both properties, section two properties, but yeah. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, I'm gonna open it up for the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? I am seeing none, so I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Any deliberations?
Since the development agreement is in ordinance, well, if it passes tonight, this would just be the first reading, just second reading, and go back to the next reading.
Correct, on August 23rd. And again, the, um, production fee is also based on if you're very successful, that fee would decrease, um, based on a certain formula, I forget what that formula was, it's something about 200% above or... Where was that? Let me just read that real quick. That, um, should the businesses be very successful and the production fee become substantial, the development provides for reduction in the facility fee. In any year, the production fee is 200% or greater of the facility fee. So the facility fee would be the one that reduces.
The $2 per foot, so.
Right.
Correct.
Right. And the reason I bring that up is because I was conflicted in adding more fees, um, because I don't see new businesses such as the new Big Five or Tractor Supply getting inflicted with those similar fees. But at this moment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rest on debating those fees at this moment in time.
This is my motion? The motion to, uh, make a motion to hold first reading, ordinance number 2007 dash 2018. I repeat, Ty Lowly, wait for the readings, set second reading for adoption on August 23rd, 2018.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrison, a second by Councilmember Kramer. Can we please get a roll call?
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Hold on. Vice Mayor Harris, I think we have to read the title of the ordinance, please, for any of your motion.
I did search for it and it didn't find it. I cheated out there. City Clear Lake Ordinance number 207 dash 2018 and, um, codify ordinance of the city council, the city of Clear Lake approving the development agreement with Chris Jennings for the property located at 16520 Dam Road.
CNN, I'll second.
All right. Motion again by Vice Mayor Harrison, second by Councilmember Kramer. Can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you guys so much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And Madam Clerk, thank you for keeping us correct on our statements. And we're gonna move on to item number five, again, a public hearing, consideration of development agreement with Clear Lake Hydro Garden for a commercial cannabis nursery. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in this particular project, the applicant is proposing a commercial cannabis operation at Rosa Plaza on Ogulon Canyon Road. The operation will utilize approximately 1,600 square feet within a 17,000 square foot existing building complex. The project proposes commercial cannabis nursing of approximately 800 square feet. He, they will also have retail sales and general merchandise not subject to the use permit. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA as an existing facility, so that's different from the previous project. Uh, property is zone C4. The uses are allowed in the C4 with a cannabis use permit. The planning commission approved the cannabis use permits and regulatory permits on June 26th at a notice public hearing. Similar to the other one, a development agreement is required for commercial cannabis operations. The planning commission recommended approval of development agreement at the June 26th planning commission meeting. Uh, the deal points are basically the same. The major difference here is with the, um, the production fee is 5% from all project operations, um, except for operations that would be between the entities. So like distribution between, if they're, if they had a, I guess this one doesn't, but if it had, if you go back to what Pumay did, um, where they had a manufacturer, distributor, and then the retail, um, in the, we wouldn't be double or triple taxing.
Between licensees, there's no fee, it's only once it...
Right, um, I shouldn't digress, this one doesn't have any of that, so. Um, there is a facility fee of $2 per gross per foot of the entire project facility as well. And then, uh, again, recommendation, just concur that the project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact and we'll be dealing with this at the second reading. Uh, and then hold the first reading of ordinance number 209-218, read by Ty Lowly, wait for the reading, and set the second reading adoption for August 23rd, 2018. That concludes my report. And the applicant is good.
And if the applicant wants to, please step up to the podium in case we have any questions. Thank you for being here tonight. Do we have any questions from the council? So I had a question when I was looking through this, it talks about the windows on the west side, which is on the back opposite from where the highway is, correct?
Yes.
And I know that only a portion of the door and entire, um, building will be used for the nursery. Again, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Is, are the windows in, uh, how are they secured to ensure that from the back where there's really no visibility for when our officers are going through or with their security in the area? How can we ensure that those windows, uh, don't play, uh, into the potential of a break-in or something like that?
If I remember correctly, Madam Clerk, I think there's actually another, um, stretch of property, like the neighbor has aligned with that back property. Mine 16 is kind of in between that area. I would have to review the paperwork to be sure, but if there is any issue, I'm happy to, you can block off the windows, you know, essentially just make that a wall, so that you know, I don't need visibility for the, for that region in any way, shape, or form. The front side, like you mentioned, is gonna have, um, garden type products. So that would be more open than the front side, which is gonna retail type centers. The back is just securely locked up essentially.
And if I'm correct, all this gets inspected by our police department before it's finally approved and so they can make their just best judgment on the situation with the windows.
Yeah, they review a security check.
Any other question?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kramer?
First, I think there's another, in the background, indicator, 2.4 miles east of Highway 53, that is incorrect. So we tried off Highway 53.
It's less than 2.5 miles. It is substantially off, but not, you know...
Maybe more like 240 feet.
Yeah, maybe.
Uh, anyway, now, was there a requirement for water for your project as well?
We, I'm working with Eric, the landowner, Michael Newdow, and me and Eric have a project we're working to bring in basically water tanks at the top of the hill to increase the, to satisfy the fire...
And what size was that gonna be?
I believe, there's nothing exact at this point, we're estimating between 15,000 and 20,000 gallons per unit. And what we may end up doing is doing like one community, like a larger, like a 40,000 gallon tank or something like that, that we all just share the, the cost of.
Okay.
And that's, that's, we've been working with the fire department on that. Essentially, Aaron Spalar has been, I understand he's already further along this process than I am anyway, so he's been kind of spearheading that.
So, so your tank, you'll share tanks with the whole...
Well, either share tanks or we'll have individual tanks that are still supplied to the same, same building, right? And so it may be multiple tanks, but it'll be enough tanks to support the needs.
So if one, one building had a problem, you'd have more than enough water to go to that...
Right, and we are actually considering, and we're actually considering going beyond just our needs. There's other tenants in the building as well, so we're just gonna basically up the water requirements for all the tenants. So if there is a fire issue, essentially what, if you go with, this isn't specific to my needs in Alana, this is just specific to, we've had a special use permit, we've been trying to sell ice cream out as well, we still have the water needs.
Fire.
So we're basically bringing up the whole building.
Okay, and then, do you, will you have a wastewater situation there or are your plants gonna basically consume all of it?
Very, yeah, I mean, nine, nine percent of the water will be consumed by the plants. And as I explained in the last meeting, the plants, by the time they're about this tall, they're already ready to seep. So they have very minimal water usage. But I am still gonna have a circulating water cleaning station, just so I'm not dumping anything into the suburbs.
Okay, so you'll reuse?
We'll reuse, it's sort of like, oh, yeah.
Any other questions? I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody have any questions for this agenda item? Comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council, deliberation or action?
Ready for action. Would you like to make a motion, hold first reading, ordinance 2018, 2017, wait for the reading, set second reading, adoption for August 23rd, 2018. City Clear Lake Ordinance number 208 dash 2018 and uncodified ordinance, city council, city of Clear Lake, approving development agreement with Clear Lake Hydro Garden for the property located at 2395 Ogulon Canyon Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harrison, a second by Councilmember Bennett. Can we please have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item number six.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from this item because, um, uh, the owner of this property provides, um, storage for the primary senior center and I'd like to just not be involved in this, just due to the fact of visual community.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Overton will be recusing herself for this item and coming back. So item number six, consideration of development agreement with Gold Country Growers Clear Lake for distribution and a delivery-only dispensary. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicant is proposing a commercial cannabis operation in Olympic Plaza. The operation will utilize approximately 3,780 square feet within an existing 44,000 square foot structure. The project proposes distribution to transport cannabis and cannabis products for other licensees and delivery-only dispensary with direct delivery via online internal home orders. Uh, the project is categorically exempt from CEQA as an existing facility. The property is on C4. The uses are allowed in the C4 with cannabis use permit. Planning commission approved cannabis use permits and regulatory permits on June 26th at a notice public hearing. Development agreement is required for commercial cannabis operations. The planning commission recommended approval of development agreement at the June 26th planning commission meeting, similar to the other ones. Um, same deal points, production fee 5% from the project operations, facility fee $2 per gross per foot. Recommendation is to concur the project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact and concur with issuing the notice exemption in accordance with CEQA. Hold first reading of the ordinance number 209-218, read by Ty Lowly, wait for the reading, and set the second reading and adoption for August 23rd, 2018. That concludes my report and I believe... I can close my report, and I believe the applicant's.
All right, if the applicant would like to, uh, come to the podium. Here you are. If we happen to have any questions. Any questions from the council based on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Anybody have a comment, questions? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council, and I think, uh, Councilmember Kramer has something.
Uh, just, uh, I have a question whether your neighbors in the complex have any comments at the time of the planning commission hearing?
I don't think there were any comments.
No? No problem, but, okay.
Another call.
Or good or bad?
I, I don't recall if there was any comment.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Bennett?
As I, uh, because we had a discussion on this a few months ago, because the original thought was that this type of, of industry would only be allowed on the east side of the tree, uh, if I'm not mistaken. However, we came to a agreement amongst the council, and all that this would be the one exemption to this, am I correct?
I believe there's a few other areas, and I think the argument that we had was whether or not, um, cultivation could occur, uh, on the west side of Highway fifty-three while other, uh, business, uh, licenses were allowed west and east.
On an individual basis?
Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. Any other questions, or do we take some action?
I need to take action on this item. Uh, hold first reading, ordinance, uh, number two zero nine dash two oh one eight, read by title only, wait for the reading, uh, set a second reading for the adoption, uh, for August twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. Uh, city Clear Lake ordinance number two oh nine dash two oh one eight, and uncodified ordinance, the city council, the city of Clear Lake, approving development agreement with Gold Country Growing, uh, uh, Growers Clear Lake for the property located at fourteen nine thirty-five Olympic Drive.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris, can I, we have a second?
No, sir.
And a second by Councilmember Kramer. We got a roll call, please, Madam clerk.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Mayor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Best of luck to our new businesses. And if we can get, uh, Councilmember Overton back.
I'd like to just say also, I appreciate all the effort that's been put in between the city staff, the planning commission, and, um, individuals that are interested in developing here in our community, very much appreciate all the, uh, time and energy that's been put into this. Hopefully, it very much stimulates our economy.
And jobs, which is always exciting. So item number seven now, under business, consideration of appointment of a planning commissioner to fill an unexpired term ending in March twenty-twenty-one. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce our city clerk, Melissa Swanson.
Honorable mayor and council members, as you know, a long time planning commissioner, Carl Webb, has retired after being on the planning commission for about eighteen years. Um, we advertised for the vacancy, uh, which goes through March of twenty-twenty-one, and, um, we had on file two applicants who were so interested in the position, Robert Coker and Janie Frizzell, Olte Frizzell, they both, um, put forward their name for consideration. And unfortunately, Ms. Olte Frizzell was unable to make it to the council meeting tonight due to the fires, um, but, uh, Mr. Coker is here tonight. So you have before you, um, questions, um, for the planning commissioners? So our recommendation is for you to enter for your candidate, if you wish, and make appointments as time wishes.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Coker, if you would, uh, please step up to the podium, thank you so much for coming this evening. There may be a bit of a deja vu with some of the questions that we will be asking you, uh, but we'll go through the formalities and, uh, then we'll make a decision. Uh, I will start with the first question, and we'll go down the line to my right, and come back over to, uh, Councilmember Kramer and keep going until we're done. So again, thank you very much for being here and for applying for this position, and, uh, let's just start with the interview. Uh, question number one, a planning commissioner's primary responsibility is to make land use decisions that are consistent with the policies and plans formally adopted by the city council. Tell us about your qualifications and why you would be a good choice for planning commission.
Well, yeah, I can't really answer that because I would definitely read up on my whole, uh, information that's given to me about the land use.
Okay. Question number two, Mr. Bennett?
What do you know about the current projects of the city?
Well, I just found out there's three in the marijuana, and then, uh, with the, the, the design district, I know they're going to change the park around, put all the playground across the street, uh, Highlands Park's being done, and from what I understand, there's supposed to be a park going in up in the alley somewhere. And the roads, of course.
Uh, do you have a defined idea about, or have you taken a public stance on any current projects in the city?
See.
So do you have a defined idea about, or have you taken a public stance, stance, stance on any current projects in the city?
I don't have any current stances in any project.
Okay, um, number four. But there are other planning projects or issues that you have concerns about or that you feel are important, planning issues facing Cluj?
I do, uh, we really need to get that airport property going to create more jobs. I think that's viable for the city.
Okay, thank you.
Some staff reports and documents, uh, documentation of the planning commission agendas can be several hundred pages long. Now, do you have the ability to commit the time necessary to thoroughly review the planning commission documents before each meeting?
Yes. It's not a problem.
Question number six, are you able to attend evening meetings on the first and third Tuesdays, and can you be available during the day on occasion to serve on ad hoc committees?
Yes.
What would you do as a planning commissioner if you were unsure of how to vote on a particular issue, and how would you handle a decision that you did not agree with?
Um, that's between, that would be something that would be discussed, and you debate it out, talk about it, and if it doesn't go my way, it doesn't go my way.
Okay, last question. What is your vision of the future of the town?
Oh, I'd love to see it grow. I'd love to see it grow into a great metropolis. I mean, just with the growth, streets all day, city with jobs and, you know, no empty buildings in town, that'd be fantastic.
All right. That concludes our interview, Mr. Coker, and, uh, how do we want to pursue, continue?
Well, I mean, she's not here.
She's not here, and so, uh, I know that we have, uh, the resumes in front of us, and so if you want to have a discussion and a decision, that's, uh, that's fine. Thank you very much. If you can sit down, we'll, we'll let you know the, uh, our results.
Well, I, I, I see, um, that Jay is, um, also a villager, which we do already have one of our planning commissioners, um, that we've got myself. Um, so I'm thinking that would be really nice, Robert's would really been involved in our community and is a business owner, and, um, I think I, I would like to nominate him to be on our planning commissioner and represent our, uh, business side of our community.
Councilmember Kramer?
I feel much the same way. Um, Mr. Frizzell, just looking at the resumes before the interviews, I was leaning towards Mr. Coker to begin with, uh, I think I liked his answers, especially on airport. And, and his basic, uh, the fact that he is a long-term business owner here and is, uh, invested in our community already, so I, I would, uh, definitely lean towards Mr. Coker.
Vice Mayor Harris?
It would be my experience that Mr. Coker represents the kind of activity we like to see in the business community in our area, um, definitely taking a leadership role, and, uh, I, I have a deep-seated belief that he also supports our police department.
It was very subtle, but you got it, you got it. Councilmember Bennett?
I, uh, concur, uh, I know, I've known Mr. Coker for, uh, several years, uh, he is a big supporter of our community, and his statement that, and I'll paraphrase it, there, there is a lot to learn, but he's willing to learn when he gets on the commission. I don't think anybody comes on the planning commission knowing all the answers. It is a continuously learning process. That's, as a council, but I think in many respects, uh, the technicalities on a planning commission and the considerations they have to take on a monthly basis, a bi-monthly, is enormous responsibility on each and every one of them. So, uh, I know him, he and his wife as local business owners, and to support what we call the airport project for the water po, project, it is not central, we can, what we call downtown, is very, um, shows a definite port sign on this part for the improvement of our community.
Thank you all. Um, I too, when, uh, looking at the, uh, resumes, noticed that we had one resume that seemed to already have a seat on the planning commission. We have a, um, a title, a company person, a realtor on our board already. Uh, with all that knowledge, we don't necessarily need to, and, um, I believe that Robert does bring a different perspective from a business, business perspective. Uh, I remember also, uh, being interviewed with Robert, uh, a long time ago, and you've been very persistent in wanting to be on this planning commission, and then today is that day, uh, where we would like to see you on that planning commission and, uh, provide input to our, um, to our city to ensure that we move forward in the right way. I think that, uh, we've pretty much made that decision unless we need, need to make an official motion. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, who?
I actually, I actually did a motion. I made a motion.
Oh, and then we discuss.
No, seconded. Well, that's what you spoke.
Right. So a motion by Councilmember Overton and second by Vice Mayor Harris, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Can I make a comment?
Let's go for it.
You're a spokesman, Chair of the planning. I think it's time to revise your questions. It has been, uh, the same questions for the last four times I've listened to your, the interview, and I think it's time to.
Thank you. And maybe that's a, a chore for the, uh, planning commissions, let us know what we should be looking for.
I think that's a great idea.
You asked my hair, it's just on that too. Please, I didn't like them the first time, I don't like them, I need to, I've never been like them before.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm sure the city will let you know when, uh, our next meeting and the large packets that you'll have to read.
August twenty-first.
Moving on to, uh, business item number eight, discussion of the twenty-eighteen League of California Cities Annual Conference Resolutions. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would once again like to introduce Melissa Swanson, our city clerk.
Honorable mayor and council members, um, the League of California Cities Conference is going to be held this year, um, in Long Beach, and during the annual conference, uh, there is a business meeting at which representatives, uh, from the city will be voting on resolutions before by the League of California Cities regarding policies, and, um, at the, the Jul, uh, the Jul, one of the July meetings, the council appointed Councilmember Overton as the delegate and Vice Mayor Harris as the alternate, and at this time, there are two resolutions put forward from the League of California Cities for the council's consideration for a stance, um, a direction to give to your delegate or alternate as to how to vote at that business meeting. The first resolution asks for support for the league to assess the feasibility of the preparation of a ballot measure and/or the constitutional amendment to preserve local legislative control. The second asks for league support of the repeal of state regulation of certain pesticides, giving local jurisdictions the authority to decide which pesticides are best for their community, and create a task force to report on the negative impact of anticoagulant road pesticides.
You did.
So, um, the action we're asking the council to take tonight is to discuss and provide direction to the delegates on how the city wishes to direct them to vote on those resolutions at the business meeting. At this time, four of the five council members and our city manager will be attending the league's conference.
All right, thank you very much for your report. Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Overton?
Hey, so, um, this is something that, of course, I, I would support on the basis of they're trying to keep it local, and that's really what we want to do, is try to maintain our local, uh, control on things and not, um, have everybody else making our decisions for us, so, try to support these both.
Thank you. Councilmember Kramer?
I support the first resolution. The second resolution, I think we have, um, there is local control to reject certain pesticides, even though they're approved statewide. Uh, there's, there's a number of pesticides that have local, um, regulations or instances. I don't think that, I think, I don't think this is needed. I don't view drug denticides as anticoagulant or denticides, but, uh, but that's not the point, I think we already, I don't think we need to have this repeal of the state regulation, um, because I don't think it's, uh, I think we have local control, as we don't allow certain pesticides into our city or into our county.
Anyone else have a comment? Councilmember Overton?
Question to our council. Kramer? Uh, so, but you say we do have local control, um, so who is the, we have local control?
Head commissioner of the county has the ability, uh, to not, um, register certain pesticides in our, in our county, so anybody can go up to him and have that conversation with him, and, uh, through the process of, uh, of, uh, asking him not be registered for this county.
So even though it may be approved at the state, we do not have to approve it, is what I could, you know, depend on the council, because I did not.
And I, and I would suggest that you talk to the head commissioner if you want further qualification.
So, um, I think my question is, is, um, what is the league, um, why are they asking a question on this, and we regulate it for ourselves?
In, in the reports, they were talking about how there's, um, it's been banned, but there's been no evidence to prove that the coagulants have had, uh, environmental impacts. However, when I was reading over all of the, um, I, I, I found it a little strange when I was reading the, uh, letters signed by other jurisdictions and cities, um, as to they said that they've witnessed the coagulants have detrimental effect to the environment, but that they approved of the repealing from the state so that they can just ban it themselves into control. It was, it was, to me, that the repealing from the state is the strange part to me. It was, it was, to me, the repealing from the state is the strange part to me. Uh, it's nice to have an overall umbrella, but still be able to have our own ability to restrict it locally. Um, so I, I, I too am on, on the edge, I'm on the fence, uh, for number two. Number one seems pretty obvious that yes, we want to be able to have, uh, the, the local assessment, uh, from the league to look at how it's going to affect the cities before, uh, uh, measures are put in place on the ballot. Uh, but the second one, I'm wondering who gains from not banning rodenticide?
Anticoagulant.
Yes, anticoagulant.
So then maybe that's really, doesn't seem to be a concern in our, for our city then.
Are we all in consensus that the first item is something that we agree with and would support and believe in cities?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, the second one, you're feeling that that's not even a necessary thing to do?
Make it overkill, so to speak.
Especially for the rodents.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with that and if I see further research on that, I'm sorry if I get to go through all of this, um, that, um, I can bring it back to you guys.
Do we want to go ahead and do a vote? Put in a motion?
For the second one?
Doesn't need to be-
For the first. They need it, a motion, you're just trying to give direction. Councilmember Overton and Vice Mayor Harris will be your delegates and I feel like they heard it.
Right.
I believe it can catch up.
Yes, I'm in line and no action on the second?
That's, okay. Looks like you have consensus.
No, no action or a vote.
No, no support for the second.
So what pose it altogether?
As we go rogue when we get there.
There'll be three of us over there looking after you. Are we good to move on? All right. We are now moving on to city managers' reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I want to give you a little bit of an update on Mendocino Complex Fire update. Now, this is as of this morning, I don't have the latest information, but the ranch fire was approximately 255,000 acres and 48% plus containment. The river fire, 49,000 approximately acres with 84% containment. Uh, our city did provide mutual aid to Lakeport and Lake County. Uh, we did open up the parks for overnight camping for evacuees. We provided smoke filtration masks at city hall and police department and public works passed it out in the parks. Even our new chief, um, Chief White was out, uh, passing them out at Walmart Center and in the park. Uh, I want to have to put out a big thank you to our public work staff and our police department staff for all that they did during this crisis. Um, as always, thank you Cal Fire, the Lake County Fire Protection District, everyone else that helped on the fire and Tractor Supply who was providing-
All tents.
Well, Big Five provided tents. Um, Tractor Supply was speeding folks, Safeway provided, um, some food as well. There are probably many others that donated to the relief effort, so I just want to thank all those folks. Um, just a note, uh, there are some signs put out at Red Bud Park and at Austin Park. The cyanobacteria levels, um, have been elevated at the most recent testing, so, um, those have been posted. Um, the air quality level, as everyone is quite aware, has not been healthy lately. Um, hopefully with the winds coming up, that will help to resolve that. New employee updates, um, you were all there, we did square in Chief Andrew White last, um, last week? We performed, we performed. Well, who's the try to time yours? Um, we have a new secretary of planning tech, Kelly Saldana Perez, so you'll see a new face at the front counter. Um, the State of the City event, originally it was planned for August 1st, but was postponed due, due to the fires. We do have a date, it's not TBD anymore, uh, we're looking at September 5th. So we'll be putting out information about that once I just verify that that date is available and I believe that it is in community center. So several dates, um, for events that are coming up, who's to put it on your calendars? August 16th is the Big Five grand opening. It's at 5:30 PM at, um, that's a Thursday?
It's 4:30.
4:30? Sorry. Uh, August 23rd, we have our regular city council meeting. We are going to have a special city council meeting on September 6th because our September 13th regular council meeting is going to be canceled because we'll all be out of town for the most part. Um, September 8th, the senior center fundraiser is going on, so please support that. September, uh, 15th, the California Coastal Cleanup Day. And September 29th, the Luau has been rescheduled. It was scheduled to be August 18th, but again, due to the fires, that's been rescheduled to the 29th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Folsom. Councilmember Kramer?
Uh, yes. Uh, several meetings I would have normally done to in the last week and a half, two weeks, all of which have been canceled due to the fire. Uh, I probably spent the biggest part of the week, um, working with evacuation centers, initial one in Lower Lake, I helped open it on the last, or the first Sunday night of the fire and was there pretty much every day off and on delivering foods that were donated, uh, by Foods Exeter and, uh, Larka's Fire Relief Fund, um, about $7,000 worth, as I recall. Uh, also helped, uh, Mayor Sabatier with, uh, Austin Park and Red Bud Park, uh, seeing that, that things were being provided and trying to, uh, trying to help to ease the evacuees, make them feel a little more comfortable where I could. Uh, and going forward, our generator for the, uh, community, uh, center evacuation shelter will be delivered within a week. It's going to be shipped tomorrow. Hopefully it will be here by Wednesday or Thursday of next week. We have a big thank you that we should be giving to Dave Rogers and Mike Dean. If you go by the senior center, I know councilman Overton, uh, sees it every day, but the slab has been poured, they did a beautiful job on it. The conduits are already in place, so when the generator gets there, they will, all they basically need to do is set the transfer switch and pull the wires and get the generator up. Uh, the, um, shower units are being built as we speak. I had a conversation with the, with the company yesterday, asked them if they could do anything to expedite the delivery of them, told them that they were aware of the fact that, uh, the fire is going on here and, uh, we'd really like to have it before the next emergency is. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bennett?
Uh, I don't have much to report with the, uh, air condition, uh, being what it is outside. I haven't been out much. Uh, very unhealthy for somebody with C O P D. I want to echo the city manager's, uh, statement to, uh, a big shout out to our, uh, mutual aid we provided from the police department and, uh, I know our, our public works department was out there and our city staff inside, made a big contribution and is still making a big contribution to the disaster we've had on. And lastly, I want to, uh, this is a very momentous day for one of our council people, our mayor, happy birthday to Mayor Spoday. Uh, I, I really think he's more than 24 years, but we'll let him stick with whatever story he has.
Thirty-five, that's it. That is thirty-five.
Just a baby.
I am thirty-nine today.
I promised I wouldn't embarrass you then.
I was gonna say-
I saw your smile when you said that this morning. I expected nothing less. Thank you. Councilmember Overton?
Uh, at this time, I don't really have anything to report, but yes, happy birthday. I was going to sing a song to you that, you know, my back to your singing song. Wait a minute, but we won't embarrass you that much.
I, I am looking for some, I am looking for something in my email, so whatever you can to, to hold that back. I want to read something that I think needs to be read out loud and I'm sorry that I wasn't prepared with it.
While you're looking at it, I have something-
Yes, you, you get a redo.
Do it, another redo. Um, adding to that, when I mentioned Safeway, um, Larka's Fire Relief Fund is back in business again, or never, has never been out. Uh, we're accepting, we, Larka is accepting donations for the Mendocino Complex Fires. We have actually received, uh, or will be on the way, a $15,000 donation from Safeway Foundation, talking about what they've done and what they continue to do. And Johnsonville Meats, uh, is putting on a, uh, they're doing some promotional work with Safeway and Northern California Safeway District, in which, uh, they'll be making a donation of $1 per every package of whatever it is their promotion is going to cover. It's sold on August 16th at all, um, participating Safeway stores, which is my understanding, there's like 140 or 50 of them. Uh, so hopefully that'll, uh, amount to a very nice, uh, nice donation as well. And that was, uh, thanks to, uh, Safeway recommending Larka for that donation, so, uh, Commissioner Sloaten over there and I are, are very grateful to those people for that. Well, that's, that's my view of it.
Also, I think we were happy to, that we could step in right away on that Sunday when the first evacuation center opened. Uh, as you all know, Red Cross didn't show up for a couple of days and we were able to, because Larka had some funds available to put that in action immediately.
Uh, Larka has been, um, crucial in the last few years to help out and I have the letter right here, so I found it and you went back there to find it. I, I just want to read a letter that we received, uh, from Lakeport. Uh, says, "The city of Lakeport is very grateful for all the assistance Clear Lake staff provided the city of Lakeport during the city's evacuation under threat of the river fire Mendocino Complex Fire. City manager Greg Folsom contacted me on Saturday, July 28th, 2018, reaching out to provide assistance to our city. He immediately offered staffing assistance to the city of Lakeport. We instantly received calls from your police department and public works. Chief White and Doug Heron also assisted in our emergency operations center, the EOC. Mr. Heron's past experiences, unfortunately, with fires in Clear Lake was a valuable resource for our EOC during the evacuation of the entire city residency. He was instrumental in connecting Lakeport with vital resources during this critical time. He was instrumental in insisting the citizens of Lakeport and county through our 24-hour EOC phone line and helped us with the planning for repopulating the city. With all his knowledge and assistance, one of the most important tasks was relieving our EOC staff who were working tirelessly around the clock. The assistance of Chief White's staff and Doug Heron's staff out in the field during this critical situation was crucial and we can't thank Greg and our, and your city council enough for providing assistance to our city. We are forever grateful, signed by me, Rayah Turner, the mayor of city of Lakeport, and Margaret Salera, the city manager from the city of Lakeport." Um, now, the mutual aid that we have offered is amazing, outstanding job. Um, I know that we felt that same situation in the sulfur fire when we also received mutual aid, uh, for patrolling, uh, our streets in the Goose Neck area and the, and the park, uh, while people were evacuated and helping us with the barricades and so on and so forth. Um, unfortunately, we're going through trying times. Um, luckily, most people have been able to go home, but unfortunately, uh, we also have people that again, in another year, have lost homes, uh, due to another tragic fire. Um, I want to thank Greg Folsom for, uh, opening up our parks. I think it was the right thing to do to offer help to our neighbors in District 3. Uh, I want to thank Chief White, uh, for ensuring that our parks were, uh, patrolled and also for his, uh, leadership in, uh, completing, uh, the, uh, opening of the park when relieving people to let them go home and to, uh, clean up our parks. I went through this morning, uh, other than garbage can, absolutely filled. Um, our parks were clean and our parks are back. Uh, and even as, uh, people were packing up and, uh, getting ready to go home last night, we could see that people were, uh, coming back into the park to use as a regular park, playing volleyball, uh, and enjoying the space. Uh, so I think that we did what we should have done and I, uh, commend, um, our staff for doing so and doing it in a very, um, cordial, inviting and, um, hu- human way. So, thank you so much for doing so. Um, I also did not, uh, get to any of our meetings. Um, actually, I don't even know if I had any meetings to go to. It feels like the last two weeks have just been crunched in about two days. Uh, I do want to also, uh, commend, um, councilmember Russ Kramer. I spent a lot of time with him, uh, going from evac center to evac center, uh, to the parks. Um, I know that, uh, if it wasn't for, uh, him and I bumping into a gentleman after a town hall meeting that we had, uh, for the fire updates, uh, we wouldn't have had showers, uh, an opportunity for those in the park to, uh, stay clean, um, and, and allowing them to have the amenities they needed to feel comfortable. Um, I know that he worked hard and diligently on ensuring that Lower Lake had what they needed, uh, and that the park had what they needed. If it wasn't for him, we wouldn't have had as much, uh, masks to hand out as well. Uh, so if you see him out and about, please, uh, shake his hand and say thank you because he definitely, uh, did his, uh, civic duty in the past week and a half and I think it's time for him to get some rest. Um, I think I'll leave it at that, except for, um, we all know unfortunately the pattern of these fires. Uh, right now, we're still on a high and eventually, especially those who have been, uh, affected, whether their friends were affected or themselves were affected by the fire and had a loss, uh, that's when we, we kind of, uh, crash after a, a little bit of a high. So if you are connected or a family member of yours has lost something, uh, please watch out for them, please, uh, offer a hand, uh, please offer an ear, uh, maybe even a shoulder, uh, because this is at the, within the next week or so, that's when our community, uh, really feels, uh, the loss that we've had. Unfortunately, we're getting used to this psychological roller coaster, um, and, and we understand how to deal with it, even though it's still painful. Uh, so please watch out for each other out there and, uh, be kind to one another. It's that time. So, I'm done with my report and it looks like we have a redo from Vice Mayor.
Here's a redo.
You actually skipped me?
Oh, did I skip you?
I figured because it was your birthday, you were just, yeah, jump right over me. But I looked to my right, I was done, I forgot I wasn't done to my left.
I apologize.
You can't believe you didn't see me here.
That's really impressive.
Blue silly buddy. So, um, real, real quick, I don't really have a lot because of, you know, everything has been, uh, pretty much all fire related, but, uh, I will, I will, uh, echo the sentiment about how appreciative we are for everybody who stepped forward and participated. I know that it was, um, for me, heartwarming to read on the, uh, the log that our officers stopped people from looting and potentially looting over in Lakeport and it's sad that there are people that do that sort of thing, but it was pretty exciting to see that it was our staff, uh, at times that were the ones stopping that sort of behavior, so I'm pretty proud of that. Um, one thing that I think that we need to consider at this point because of this being an ongoing issue and I think that when it is appearing that the future will hold more and more of this, is that, um, as two of the gentlemen that came in today spoke about, I think we really need to take some serious steps towards mitigating the, um, weeds and , uh, undergrowth that's accumulated throughout our city and whatever steps are necessary to, um, to seriously enforce that, if that means, um, raising fines or, uh, a more aggressive approach at it. Are you suggesting a future agenda item? I am, I am. I'm last, so just so we tie them together. So, uh, so yeah, I would like to discuss that in a future agenda item. I would also, uh, potentially like to discuss, I'm not sure what, to be honest with you, I'm not sure what our stance can be on this, but, um, you know, some major changes have taken place in the way that we used to, um, mitigate large, um, growth of vegetation. And when I was a, a young man here, been here my whole life, when I was a young man here, we used to do a lot of controlled burning and I know, um, air quality no longer, um, is real hip on that idea and as a result, we don't do much of that.
Yeah, for granted. Do a lot of just-
Right. So I would, I would lean towards the idea at this point that the air quality that we're receiving because of the Department of Air Quality's decisions is counterproductive in every way, shape and form. So whatever we can do as a body to, um, to influence the decisions that are made, uh, as a county, at a county level, I think would be advantageous for us to discuss. Thank you. Do we have consensus to, uh, bring those items to?
Yeah, we definitely need to discuss.
Looks like you have, looks like you have consensus for us to have further discussion on that. Anything else? Redos, future agendas? All right. Everybody out to- Everybody else?
Mayor Harris, you said it well.
One more happy birthday there, over.
Happy birthday to you.
You got all the songs.
Thank you very much for coming tonight to our council meeting. It means a lot to see everybody out there and to those on PEC TV watching, thank you for watching, or those streaming. Thank you very much, Beth, for making that happen for us. And everybody, have yourselves a wonderful night.